And welcome, ladies and gentlemen, I call to the Board of the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners and Business Meeting, June 29, 2016. This is budget time, so we'll be running through a lot of budgets today. In fact, chiefly that. Mr. Krepp's gonna do the roll first, though.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. It's a little unusual doing this on a Wednesday, but we'll make it work. So, we are joined this morning with County Council, Mr. Stephen Matcor, and also our Clerk of the Board, Mary Rathke. And I'll start with a roll. Commissioner Bernard, here. Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Chair Lutto?
Here. You'd all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And so, starting right in, Mr. Krepp, we have our first public hearing.
Citizen.
You should ask.
Oh, my gosh, Citizen Communications. I thought it was on a specific one, so... And so, we'll call forward Tom Salzer.
I know it's budget day. I'll try not to take too much time. My name's Tom Salzer. I'm the general manager of the Clackamas Soil and Water Conservation District. Nice to see faces that I've met most of you before. Some of you have been out to our farm. On Monday night, our Board of Directors took a major step, and they met in a special session, held a special meeting, and they adopted a policy statement about protecting farmland. Before you is the letter from them, signed unanimously by all seven Board Directors, essentially stating that they believe we need to do a better job maintaining the availability and viability of farmland for the good of Clackamas County. And with that, since I know it's budget day, I will stop.
Commissioner Smith.
Mr. Salzer, is there something that would make this board and you believe that we are not protecting our viable farmland? Because the latest statistic that we were made aware of is that the actual farms in Clackamas County are declining, and many of them have gone fallow because we don't have a younger generation taking over them.
There's certainly that issue. Clackamas County has more farms than any county in the state, but also the smallest average farm size of any county in the state. So viability of all these small parcels of land becomes a bit of an issue. And from our point of view, we're losing farmland. Between 2007 and 2012, we've lost 20,000 acres of land. That's 11 percent of our viable farmland. So our concern is, for the long-term culture and character of the county, we need to protect our high-value farmland, and development should occur on land that is less suitable.
Well, if we have lost 20,000 acres of farmland, where did it go? Because I don't see a whole lot of high-rises, and I don't believe this statistic. The farmland is still there. I submit to you, as a fourth-generation farmer myself, I know the average size of farms in Clackamas County is 43 acres.
Yep.
Okay? Yes, they are small. Some of them could be classified as hobby farms. Some of them can be classified as a second-income farm. I don't think those farms have gone by the wayside. So maybe the problem isn't on what government policies are. And you state between 2007 and 2012 was a very hard time economically, not only for businesses, but for farming in particular. For instance, Christmas tree crop. Clackamas County, Blaine County, Lynn County, biggest crop, Christmas tree crop. You could hardly sell those out of the field for what you had put into them. And a lot of the farmers says, heck, I'm not gonna go out and work and sell my trees for $5 when I have $10 in them. And a lot of them just cut and burn. And that's what was going on in 2007 to 2012. So is there something that you can point to specifically that we're doing that would indicate that we are not protecting farmland?
No. These are USDA statistics, and I'm here representing my Board of Elected Officials, speaking to you as elected officials, and they would like to communicate with you more frequently in the future about farmland protection.
Well, maybe we could have a meeting. I'd be more than happy to sit down and talk with you folks at a joint meeting sometime.
That would be excellent. Thank you.
Savis?
Yeah, I was just reading your letter here. Maybe some of the questions that I was gonna ask have already been answered with the dialogue from Commissioner Smith and yourself. So, is... What was the impetus that brought this on in particular? Is there any?
The recent request for Metro to consider reclassifying some land as employment land, I think, was the catalyst. But the district board adopted working lands as one of their primary strategy issues. Two years ago, up to that point, we had water, wildlife, and weeds as our three main issues. The board took a 50-year look forward and realized that at the rate we're losing farmland, that we wouldn't have farmland in 50 years. And so they've added protection of working lands as part of their core set of strategies.
So the... Again, I'm just gonna... Just for my own clarification, and this one paragraph here, according to the Census of Agriculture, da-da-da, that we lost 16,000 acres here in this period, and 20,000 here in this particular period, and you're citing in your letter. That's lost due to economic conditions and decisions made by the property owners not to farm their land primarily?
It's that and conversion and reduction in parcel size because of building of houses. And of course, when you don't have contiguous acreage, it's harder to farm that economically. And as I pointed out to Commissioner Smith, and she already knows, with the smallest average farm size, viability is... It's a struggle.
Right, right. So I'm kinda curious, are you guys following the marijuana industry? Because now that is making... I mean, not that I advocate that that is the kind of farming I want to see personally, which is not, but I'm just kinda wondering, with this new influx, is that not really a kinda reverse the trend perhaps? And now there's more of an economic driver to get people to use the land for farming production? That might actually turn the corner and turn these numbers around, absent any action from the Commission regard to employment lands. I see that maybe turning the tables a little bit, or the trends.
It could, and we are following it. Closest analog is probably the conversion of land in Yamhill County, which was traditionally used for raising goats, considered fairly low-value land, suddenly became very high-value land with the advent of vineyards and wineries in that part of the countryside. And now we see marijuana growing, grows here. That's a very intensive use of the land. You can get high-dollar value off a small footprint. Don't know where that's really gonna go. In our office, it's a bit of an issue because our federal partners in the office can't touch that. So that workload falls to us as the district of providing technical support to these fellows, ladies, and men who come in wanting help with their irrigation system, hoop houses, security, those kinds of things.
Okay. Lastly, I'll just say, because maybe there is an opportunity to engage your board a little bit better, but I know that I've, and perhaps a lot of my colleagues up here as well, were concerned and are looking at that issue in and of itself. You know, how can we make our lands more productive and so forth? But also, I just wanted to say that it was my personal effort to try to advocate for re-looking at the boring urban reserve and looking at some of the productive lands. I make a distinct... I try to distinguish or make a distinction between farmland and productive farmland.
Yeah.
Farmland that's out there that's fallow, that nothing's happening, and farmland that where there is something happening. I value what's productive because people are doing it. It's incentivized. I don't want to discourage that. And I thought that there's a lot of opportunities in the boring urban reserve where that's just the case. How do we protect those and maybe look at redesignating those that are undesigned? But it takes the property owner's will to farm the land, and the numbers you're citing here is really reflective of that, not any governmental action per se.
I think our view is perhaps a little longer term, and it boils down very simply to if we lose the farmland, it's no longer available for other future generations to farm. It may be fallow at the present time, but if we lose it, it's gone. Our cities have been built on the best soils in the Willamette Valley, on Class 1 and Class 2 soils.
I don't doubt that.
That land is gone. And with expansion, we continue to try to expand onto nearby flat land, which is again Class 1 and Class 2 soils. Once those soils are gone, they cannot be farmed.
Commissioner Smith?
I wouldn't disagree with... On that, but that's already done. You talk about future generations farming, and people my age who are in the farming business have a difficult time trying to find somebody who wants to farm. Because farming happens when farming happens, and many times you have to take your vacation time to farm, and it requires weekends, and it requires, as you know, a whole host of behaviors that many of our young people don't want to engage in because they don't see the profit in it. And so that's an issue. I'm not sure how we're gonna change that behavior. Another reason, when we talk about... We have a large amount of fallow farms in Clackamas County, and when that happens, they become unproductive because of invasive weeds. And I went to your board some time ago and discussed this issue with you about taking advantage of what the state may be doing through the Department of Agriculture in funding a weed district. And if... I think if you want to really be serious about looking at some of our farms, maybe taking a look at the additional allocation for weeds that I was proposing to you, and maybe that's something that your board could do. But I haven't heard back from you what your position on that is. Maybe you can tell me today.
I would be happy to. We were waiting for word from the county as to how you wanted to proceed in that direction. I think our Board of Directors for the district is very supportive. We currently have several hundred thousand dollars in contracts let to various vegetation management specialists.
Right.
Weed control folks. We do a lot of work on weed control, especially on new and emerging invasive species, and recently won a grant, a couple of grants, from PGE and Metro for more than $400,000 of weed control work in the Clackamas River watershed. So weed control for us is one of our very core issues. We have three full-time staff.
I know, and I'm thankful that you do that. I really am, because I don't know anybody in Clackamas County that's doing it. We must have had a communication problem because I was waiting for your board to say, yeah, this is a good idea, no, this isn't a good idea. Now that I've heard from you that, yes, this is a good idea, we can... I can instruct staff to go ahead and forward and figure out what we want to do with this. Mr. Krepp?
Thank you.
Is that a good idea?
I'll follow up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and apologies for dropping that ball.
Don't worry.
Commissioner Bernard?
Well, I think the Clackamas Soil and Water District actually has a long view of the loss of farmland. I mean, look at California, where the lack of water, the changing environment makes Clackamas County and Oregon a much more inviting area to farm. Around where I live, there's not a fallow farm. And I... And even recently, a farmer that has farmed produce for a long time replanted his farms with filberts. I was quite surprised. And I live around a lot of filbert orchards, which you actually have a filbert orchard. And California folks are coming up and buying them, and I think that you'll see a lot of those small farms combined with others over time. I mean, the lack of water in California, the lack of rainfall, the increased temperatures. Oregon, Clackamas County perhaps has one of the best... You know, the weather is pretty advantageous, except last year. Last year was terrible, but this year is quite good for farms. So I think it's the long view that we need to look at, the protection of farmland over the long haul, 50 years or more.
Commissioner Schrader?
So I wanted to just point out that agriculture is a key component of our investment plan here. And there's a link, and you can find it on our website, that deals with agriculture and our investment. And one of the innovations we did is we have a Clackamas County Food System One-Stop. And I believe you folks helped participate in pulling that together. And basically, it's essentially a virtual Farmgate that gives growers access to resources so they can be more successful. And some of the... The whole idea was farmers can get real help. It's online 24/7. It's quick and easy to navigate, place to solve problems. It's aligned with EcoTrust Food Hub, you know? So we're attempting to make sure that we get younger people in there, in the agricultural industry, by also having this kind of a resource. And so the buckets where people could find information include what to grow, raise, and how to grow it, marketing, processing, and distribution, farm management, labor, and financing, farm infrastructure, land tools and equipment, government services and regulation, resource conservation and certification, which I think is where you guys probably really fit in with this, and then farm support, businesses, vendors, and organizations. And by farm support, it's also trying to find markets. And one of the things that happened recently, because we had the USDA out here, some representatives in the USDA as part of the White House Rural Council, is that we have been able to now export, I believe cherries, blueberries, strawberries, and another berry, frozen, actually, to markets in China, which is a huge leap forward for us. So when we talk about farmland, there's two things. Number one, we have to have enough of it. Number two, we have to train people who really want that lifestyle. I know my sons are growing hops right now on our family farm, which I'm really pleased that somebody's taking it over. And we have to... We have to recognize that agriculture is employment, and it is a huge industry. As Rick Gruen has always said to me, it's manufacturing without walls, actually, in many ways. And I know that the land use situation gets touchy sometimes because the tension we deal with is flat land is good for farming, and it's also good for employment land. So we have to consistently balance that tension. And I think we're seeing that play out, you know, with the outreach that's been going on about lands that we're trying to look at for employment. But I do like to remind people that agriculture is. We have emergent markets. And the other piece of this is, it's also food processing and other kinds of things, and equipment pieces. There's all that collateral business that also hooks into farming that is part of our industry and helps us be prosperous. So thanks for coming, and I'm just gonna tell everybody, look up the Business/Agricultural Plan on our website under Business and Community Development.
Thank you. Mr. Salzer, did you provide the information to your board that led to this letter?
No, I did not.
So they got their own information? For example, do you know the three areas that we are considering as undesigneded?
We do. The board has representatives living in each of those areas.
All right. Do you know how much of those three areas are currently being farmed?
We know the soil distribution in those areas. We don't have an accurate census of what's actively farmed and what's not farmed.
Well, it's not very much. I'll just tell you that. So was your board aware that we had a study done by a professional that indicated that we're 1,100 acres short on job-producing lands?
Yes, they are.
Okay, that doesn't seem to matter. So you know what an undesigned means and how long it would take to move it from undesigned to urban?
I believe so.
Do you?
I believe so.
Okay. So the rule says that 75 percent of the urban-zoned property, the reserves, in the urban area must be used up before undesigned could change. So you're talking about long-range planning. We're talking about 25-plus years from now. Unless you got a crystal ball, I don't know what Clackamas County would look like. And I've lived here long enough to know 50 years back that we didn't know what was gonna happen in 50 years. So when there's pressure put on by people who want to live on land, and we can talk about the job-producing lands, we also talk about where people want to live on their own piece of Americana. The home builders and OHSU and a whole bunch of other people went through a study to find out if people really wanted to live in a house versus an apartment. And 80 percent of them said, if the price is right and the location was correct, they would rather live in a single-family home. Now, that is pressure, but, you know, having known... Having been a real estate broker for 40 years in this area, I know the lands very well. You know, it's often talked about French Prairie. And, oh, my gosh, well, French Prairie is defined as everything from Kaiser north to Wilsonville, from the river, literally, as you cross in Wilsonville, going west all the way to the river again when it turns due south, and all the way to Camby. That's 150,000 acres. There's nobody intruding on that acreage, and a lot of that, again, is sitting fallow. So again, education and the promotion of farm practices is good stuff. I think you'd gain a lot more on that than saying no farmland should ever be used again for residences or job-producing. And that's what you're saying. Because there's no other place, unless you've got a better place for us to go, we've looked at these three. We're always open to better ideas.
Just to be clear, my board's not actually saying exactly that. They're saying that if farm that is less... Land that is less suitable for farming is available, it should be developed rather than the high... Best high-value farmland.
Well, we're anxious to hear where those places are.
Thank you.
In particular, the one south of Wilsonville is a golf course. It's woodburn A, B soils, kinda drained reasonably, but it's certainly not foundation farmland. The area in Charbonneau, that's foundation farmland, black soil, as black as you get. So, you know, there is a differential. Having, again, grown up around the federal maps, soil maps, you know, people don't have no idea what a soil map looks like with all those swirls and changes, and, oh, my gosh, how could that be here and this be there? Well, alluvium deposits, et cetera, gave us different soils 100 yards from where you're looking and standing right then. So it's interesting stuff. But again, you know, there's a lot better lands out there than what the ones we're talking about bringing in. But I appreciate you coming today and your advice and the letter from your board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was not 30 seconds.
Yeah, I apologize. I said I went long.
No, you're fine. Old grudges. All right. That 30-second one gone. Thank you for your patience, Mr. Salzer. And so we are having our first of 16 public hearings now. Mr. Krepp's gonna introduce that.
Yes, we do. And of course, most of these 16 public hearings, you'll actually be convening as the Board of Directors for a specific service district. But we are starting with you serving as the Board of County Commissioners. And the first public hearing is to consider the adoption of the Clackamas County budget for the fiscal year 2016, 2017. And of course, you know, how do you put it? The budget is dead. Long live the budget, you know? As we kinda...
Haven't heard that yet.
Is that our new saying?
I'm gonna... I'm gonna start it as we move forward, so... But Diane Padilla, our budget manager, our very fine, outstanding budget manager, is here this morning to introduce this specific item and get it set up for action by the board.
Yes, thank you. I'm here to request adoption of the fiscal year 2016, 2017 budget for Clackamas County. This is the final step in a multi-step public process. This budget has been considered by its Budget Committee comprised of the five Commissioners and five citizen members. They've discussed the budget with each of the departments, considered various policy-level proposals, taken public testimony, and then deliberated and revised and approved a budget. This budget, as approved by the Budget Committee, was published in the Clackamas Review, Oregon City News, on June 22. And then today, I'm here to ask you for one more change. This would be in addition to the Social Services Fund of $270,357 for a Housing for Heroes Grant just recently received. This amendment is within the Commissioners' authority to approve at adoption, and it is detailed in the packet as Exhibit A. The result of this last adjustment, then, has been incorporated in Exhibit B, also in the packet, which is the fund-by-fund detail of the appropriations for the budget. This budget also includes the Budget Committee's acceptance of the recommendations of the Compensation Board for Elected Officials to make an individual salary adjustment to the clerk's salary of 0.8 percent and an individual adjustment to the assessor's salary of 2 percent. Similarly, it includes acceptance of the recommendation of the county administrator to grant a 2 percent general increase for non-represented employees, in keeping with that provided for represented employees. To establish the budget for fiscal years 16, 17, there are four specific actions to be taken. Adopt the budget in the amount of $722,112,603. Make appropriations in the amount of $693,62,321, the difference being $29,50,282 held in reserve, which is not being appropriated and will not be spent this next fiscal year. Categorize all revenue as falling under the general government limitation for measure five purposes. And finally, to impose the county's maximum permanent tax rates of $2.4042 per thousand dollars of assessed value in cities that have 24-hour police patrol services, and $2.9766 per thousand dollars of assessed value in all other areas of the county, and also $0.2480 per thousand dollars of assessed value in the county for public safety via a permanent local option, let me. With that, I respectfully request adoption of the 2016-17 budget for Clackamas County.
Now, Diane, contained in the motion that we have before us would be the inclusion of Exhibit A. Is that correct?
Yes.
So we don't have to call that out separate?
No, it's included in the pack, in the budget as requested.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions? The presenter, Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I have some things I want to say regarding this budget, but I have a question for Diane first. The Housing for Heroes Grant, what type of housing does that go for?
Housing for veterans.
Veterans. Wow, very nice. I wasn't aware that we got that. Okay? I want to say some things about the budget. You know, whenever we do a budget like this, it seems like...
You want me to wait till after the public hearing? I might as well close it, if you don't mind. All right, I'm gonna open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak. Close the public hearing, Commissioner Smith.
Okay, thank you. Seems like when we do these budgets, especially this year, there was a lot of unfinished business left on the table. And to give some perspective, when I was first elected in 2012, we came on board. My first budget was in 2013, and we were still experiencing a downturn because of the recession. And now we have climbed out of it. The last two budget cycles, we've had more money to spend on programs. We were able to hire a few people back who had been laid off during that. And what has happened, now that we're climbing out of the recession, is we've seen growth. We've seen growth in our county. We're over 400,000, or at 400,000 population right now, and we can see outwardly the influence on that. Well, it's also affected our budget. We have areas, for instance, in our planning department where permits are taking a little bit longer because of the large amount of business. And as our budget reaches a billion dollars, we're no longer one of these little backwoods counties. We are playing with the big league now. And as we all have been made aware of, some of our internal governance systems have not kept up with that. And that would be software. Our aging software has really... We, this Budget Committee, I think, bought one or two... And as we all have been made aware of, some of our internal governance systems have not kept up with that. And that would be software. Our aging software has, really, with this budget committee, I think, bought one or two small packages. We have internal systems that really aren't matched region-wide with other government agencies, and that's something that I would like to see. We've also adopted Clackamas, Performance Clackamas, our strategic plan, that actually says that we need to do these things. However, this budget committee did not adopt nor pass some of those measures that are important for this, to attain our goals in Performance Clackamas, and I'm rather critical of that. We approved one policy-level package through finance, DES, and IT departments that allows for coordination between those, but that is just a very, very small amount of where we need to go. We also approved a software package for grants management, system-wide and county-wide in all of our departments, which is very, very important. And I am also not a fan of pulling money out of reserves to pay for things that come up at the last minute, and that's possibly what was done. We had a lot of good ideas that were left on the table. And one of the things, I got a call from a friend who had a building permit, a very simple egg-building structure, and he's been waiting seven weeks for action to be taken. And then, when he finally got the report back this week, he didn't understand a thing that was in it, not because he's a very good builder. And so, we have frustration, I think, in some of our citizens, thinking they may not get their services as needed. And I would just like to understand how we can put money aside for programs that we don't have, and I think that puts pressure on next year's budget with the expectations that somehow we're going to pay for them. And I have some questions for Don that I will ask. For instance, Don, and I have, and I have about eight points I want to make here on the budget, so please bear with me. We were supposed to take money out of one reserve account and put it to backfill some of our PERS. Was that done?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And Diane, you said we have a reserve now of twenty-nine million. Is that county-wide?
Yes.
Okay, wasn't that reserve number actually higher in preceding budget years?
It may have been marginally higher. It's kind of hard to say because it's the sum, of course, of all the reserves and all of the funds. It may have been marginally higher.
Okay.
I don't have the sense that it's plummeted.
Okay. Because there was pressure from some of our citizens on the budget committee to spend down our reserves, and that's a policy that I opposed and I will not go for. You know, based on the fact that those reserves are not for a rainy day so much as to spend willy-nilly, but as in the major disaster. We could have a major disaster just on our roads that would wipe out our road fund reserve. And we talk about earth cakes, we talk about other things, and so, I think it's really prudent upon us as commissioners to make sure that our funds remain steady. Another budget pressure we had this year was personnel costs. And whereas, I think we gave COLAs in around the two point three percent margin...
Two percent, excuse me.
Okay, thank you for that correction. Two percent, the actual COLA in the Portland area is point eight percent. So, not only is the COLA a COLA, but it's also a raise in addition to other raises that we gave to our represented employees, and I'm not saying they don't deserve them because there were cutbacks made during the down recession where thankfully, they foregone, they forewent their raises so we could balance our budget. But I'm just talking to the folks out there, saying personnel costs went up, our insurance premiums are going up. This year's predicted twenty-nine percent market-wide insurance is going to go up, and frankly, I don't know how anybody can afford to pay that. But that's another thing. That's a roll-up cost for previous years that will have to be taken out of our budget, yet another pressure on budgets to come. We also, at the county level, have to deal with unfunded mandates from our state legislature. And one of the biggest ones is the marijuana situation. Now, the citizens passed one piece of legislation legalizing marijuana for recreational uses. However, when it went to the legislature, gee, we got House Bill thirty-four hundred, who totally put it on its ear, mandated a lot of things that the counties do, you know, without, I think, possibly adequate funding and without our own ability to enforce law enforcement, which I think is really, really short-sighted of them to think that the OLCC is going to come out and regulate the illegal activities, that we can't send our own sheriff's deputies out to arrest or possibly detain illegal marijuana activity, and I'm really concerned about that. Secondly, thirdly, hang on a minute. You know, John Foote came before us and asked for a position at the Clackamas Women's Shelter, and, which I think is needed and we approved, but you know, he also said, "I can find fifty thousand dollars in my own budget to pay for it this year." And, you know, that was, I thought, very generous of him because I think he does budgeting very well. But, you know, the one thing that he said that I think applies to us commissioners as well, it really doesn't matter what our past performance is regarding the public, and he quoted, and he says this, "We are as good as our next case because we serve the people." And I think the public's perception is just because we did what we did in the past, they do not feel guaranteed that we'll continue the good actions of the future. And that's why I am so picky about budgets when we go forward on this. We also have some challenges at the county. The challenges are, in a few years, we have about forty-three percent of our workforce eligible to retire, and people were born between nineteen forty-six and nineteen sixty-five. There will probably be a huge, huge exit. And you know, the thing that's different about retirements these days with the baby boomers that was not so when my folks retired is they come in for work for one day, say, "Well, maybe some don't give notice. I'm out of here. I'm retiring, and I really don't want a party or a gold watch. That's not what I'm about. I want my retirement, and I'm done." So, a lot of times, some of these retirements are unexpected, and I think our departments show that that has happened. Our recruitments cannot totally meet the demand for our retirees, and that goes back to the Department of Employee Services and their software package in combination with our IT group. And that department, if we're going to be functioning as a responsible public government and our internal government systems, we need to make sure that that department is funded in our next budget cycle to where they need to be performing. And yes, they need new software as well. Program backlogs. You know, we have some programs that we're trying to put together, but unless we have our really valuable citizens and our retirees who are leaving the brain drain, that's not going to happen. And I plan on sitting down and talking with some of our people about this budget. And I have some specific things I'm going to mention in the budgets, but I just want to say it's very easy and tempting in this budget process to buy things to make people feel good. You know, I want my housing for veterans. I want my this for heritage, and I want this and this and this. And, but if we don't take care of what we have in our governance model, I think we're going to be sorely missing out for the future. And then, we go into this next year's budget, we're doing that. I'm certainly going to be a voice for some of the proposals that this board has passed as far as Performance Clackamas is concerned and make sure those pass. And that's all I have for now, but you'll expect to hear from me later. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Bernard?
I just want to say that, you know, if I were to give a budget message, Clackamas County is strong, has done very well in a very tough economy, and some of that is because we're conservative. You know, one of the big issues with retirements was the legislature's attempt to change PERS, and a lot of people jumped when that happened. And so, you know, I have been here a while, and I can say that I'm honored by the years and Paul and I and all of us have done the recognition luncheons. The years of service that people have put in to Clackamas County is amazing. It is amazing, and I can really tell that they care. The issue for me is the jail beds that we invested in in two thousand eleven, and we still have not used them, and that's for mental health folks. And that's a big challenge, and we need to work on that while we're moving this, through this budget cycle. There is, we are conservative. There is additional, there is potentially additional money coming from the federal government, secure rural schools money. But, you know, as far as reserves, the discussion needs to be had about what is appropriate for reserves. Twenty-nine million seems like a lot of money. And when it goes to saving lives or helping folks move into society, that's what those reserves are for. And I think we were very, very conscious of the fact that we tried to maintain as much in reserves as possible, but when necessary, like your savings account, that's what reserves are for. Just having money in the bank doesn't make us any better. And at some point, you reach a level of reserves where the taxpayers say, you know, maybe you have too much money in savings. So, I think we did a really good job on this budget cycle. For me, it's just about jail beds and getting those open. And the DA, he did do a good job. I just wanted to clarify that it was the Family Justice Center, not Clackamas Women's Services that staff person went to, and we, have we met that person yet?
No.
No, so we haven't met that person. But I'm proud of the work that the budget committee did, and I look forward to further discussions on how to spend our money to save lives and feed people. I think the statistics of the hungry people without meals in Clackamas County are huge. And kids who, the only meal they get is at school is terrible. And why are we like that? I don't know. And also, you know, our prison population in Oregon, one of the highest populations for people of color in the nation, and something's wrong there. So, justice reform is something of great interest to me. Thank you.
Commissioner Savas?
Well, I will, probably don't have as many things to talk about as Commissioner Smith, but I do want to just capitalize on one thing that she mentioned at the very beginning, that was some of the unfinished business, and I was looking forward to an additional day, I think, June eighth. I think we closed this out with the Public Budget Committee on the seventh. But I thought we did. I thought we just, I just got warmed up and, you know, I would kind of show folks. I brought my budget book, and inside there were all my notes and so forth. A section about that thick of things I was looking forward to talking about as we were getting. But a motion was made to approve the budget, and I thought, a little bit, you know, personally, not hitting on anyone here, but a little bit premature because I was just about ready to address some of the things that I think Commissioner Smith was referencing that we could have worked on. I was very proud in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, that we finally in two thousand twelve worked towards a resolution for adopting reserves and contingency policy. And I think it was just a couple of years ago, we actually funded that fully, and very proud of that, too. And so, this year, to actually pull down that for a non-emergency kind of thing was kind of difficult for me, so I was looking at ways to figure out how we could do that without pulling down those reserves. And I think that to the jail beds that was discussed and some of the other, I won't say we budgeted that, but we certainly made, I think, commitments towards looking at that. We made commitments beyond our means, and we haven't figured out a way yet to get there, and we're going to talk about that in September. But I'm concerned about really tapping in the reserves in this non-emergency kind of a situation. But, and I didn't, I came here today, at least on this particular, but we have fifteen items that we're going to be talking about individually, and this is the big one. This is the largest one of all, so this is probably the one that deserves probably the most amount of discussion. So, as we, I will say, echo again, I'm concerned about pulling the reserves down. I'm concerned about making commitments that we necessarily can't fill. And granted, I think every one of us up here understands the, some of the social safety net that we provide and care about, whether that's people that are homeless or people, victims of domestic violence, people that are in jail, people that are going through the system, victims also as well of crimes, that we have a whole array of responsibilities, and they are important to a number of people. So, we try to balance that out. I understand that's really what this is, is really a balancing of how we appropriate those monies. So, but I, the part, I guess, again, I kind of struggle with is that, yes, we do have reserves. Should we pull them down? When should we pull them down? But I think this is the one that I struggle with the most coming here today, on this final day. And I really would have liked to have a greater discussion. We didn't have that. Again, it was cut, I think, a little bit short when the motion was made to approve it, the budget. But we did get some commitments. We did get some policy-level proposals that I agree with, that I think were important. But is it as conservative as I'd like to see? You know, no, but, you know, we got to balance that. We have to balance that with the social needs, obviously, and some of our other priorities. But we, you know, we did do some things here that I'm in favor of. And a five-million-dollar commitment, at least a policy commitment, towards trying to make sure that we put a certain amount of pavement on the road or service treatments on the road. So, there's some good things in here that I'm good with, but I'm just kind of stunned by how much the budget is growing, you know? Jim, I think it was years ago, you took some heat for it, but you said, you know, you were looking forward to a billion-dollar enterprise, when I was thinking, oh, no, no. You know, that's not what, that's not a goal for me. But we're there at a far faster rate than I imagined, so the total thing, we're approaching a billion dollars, and that's not, that doesn't give me a lot of comfort. And I think the other one that struck me that accelerates that is our commitment towards the fifty-nine million dollars voters approved for the C-800. And I would certainly want to get more involved in that because that's a responsibility that we have as a board to somewhat, I think, I believe anyhow, to oversee to some degree, at least have some checks and balances with that. But all in all, I know staff did a tremendous amount of work. I want to thank staff for a whole lot of work that they did and a whole lot of their patience and our questions and so forth. But I'm detail-oriented. I think you all know that and probably have a lot more energy towards drilling down than most people can tolerate, so... Which goes without saying, but, you know, this is our one time a year to do that, and I, you know, we just got to balance that out, and so, I do want to thank everyone for their support of some of these policy-level proposals, and we're going to take some good with some bad and some great with some difficult, and plow ahead, so, those are my comments.
Commissioner Schrader?
I just want to thank the staff for all their hard work because budgeting with commissioners is never an easy task. And I know, Diane, I've been working with you since two thousand three, so thank you. I know that it gets tense and grueling because you're dealing with a pretty activist budget committee now, too, which makes it even more fascinating as we work through some of these issues. I just wanted to say, echo a little bit of what Jim said because I pulled up as we were talking about that the county's doing well and we're strong. When you look at the, I just got in my email today, basically, the economic trends are happening in this county. And basically, we're looking very, very good. And according to the Department of Labor's statistics, we can expect a total of nearly twenty thousand, twenty-four thousand new jobs in the next decade. The industries adding the most jobs include professional and business services, healthcare, social assistance accommodation, food services, construction, retail trade. But I think the really good news is that our unemployment rate dropped from eleven percent in two thousand nine to the current low of three point nine percent. And that is point four percent lower than the state at this point. So, we are, as a county, economically strong, which really makes it even more crucial that as we manage the tax dollars... which really makes it even more crucial that as we manage the tax dollars because of our economic vitality, that we truly are reflecting what our constituents want and that we are sticking to performance Clackamas. One of the things that I was, I continue to be interested in and will stay interested in, I don't know why people always try and call me in the middle of meetings, but they do, so there you go, that I thought about and been thinking about is the housing crisis. The housing crisis we're facing is national, it's state, it's regional, and in particular, it's local. And it's local for us, because oftentimes, we are the counties. Not only Clackamas County, but all 36 counties. We're the doers, we're the boots on the ground, we're the folks that have to oftentimes manage those kinds of issues with coming at us, getting people in homes. And I think that that is emerging as a key component of some of the things we're doing. And I know that we've discussed veterans' housing, which of course, we're all in support of. But it's also a way to get people interested, not just in veterans, but the continuum of folks that we are now dealing with, who are homeless, about to be homeless, who are on a trail somewhere camping out, and how do we manage that? And we can say, oh, yeah, we can get more money. But I'm also convinced that it isn't just really the money. I believe that we just need new strategies and how we deploy what we already have creatively in order to help solve that issue. We can't do business as usual. And as commissioners, I believe that we need to give our staff the opportunity to be entrepreneurial and creative in order to move forward with new strategies. For example, Pat Farr was here the other day. They have been doing some extremely innovative work in housing down in Lane County. They're a smaller county, they have less resources. They have been hit even harder. They're one of the key counties that have been hit by timber, not having that revenue. And yet, they are probably one of the top innovators, not only with veterans, but in housing in general. And it is because they didn't leverage just money. They leveraged community players, community input. They pulled together nonprofit, for-profit, and business members to be the players in how to solve the problem. So it isn't just about the money. And it is about strategy. And the strategy is performance Clackamas. And I do think this commission's done a great job in all the years I've been here, actually having a management-for results framework, I think, is going to transform the strategies with how we deliver services like housing for the poor, housing for people who are homeless, housing for folks who might be about to fall into it, but we can save them from that. So I think by and large, budget's always a little bumpy. I'm used to it, you know, we're always going to have those issues with it. I was particularly happy, however, that Maureen Thompson's program, Community Solutions, was actually prioritized, because she will be essential in the transition center, for example, with getting our prisoners who are lending out of jail, getting them maybe on a path not to get back into jail again. And Don, there was one housing program that did fall below. And it was, do you remember the name of it? I want to say it was Housing First, or?
It's the Home Base.
The Home Base Program.
But it's my understanding is, is our Health, Housing, and Human Services staff are looking at how we can continue to preserve.
Okay, and that's what I mean. It kind of fell below, but it's critical. I think it serves at least 60 families, and we don't want that to go away. But we have a creative staff that will look at the strategies to make sure we can maintain this. So anyway, that's all I have to say, and I'm ready to vote whenever.
Well, you mind if I say something first?
Oh, not at all.
Thanks. You know, Diane, you had, you said there's a 2% raise for non-represented employees. What did you call that? Why is there a 2% raise?
Well, it's parity with the represented groups. The issue generally is compression, where you have a represented employee who's making as much as or more than their supervisor. Because with the bargain groups, the COLAs have generally been.
That's the word I'm looking for. Let me just interrupt that. Well, I mean, look, we were told in the budget that the cost of living for Portland had gone up 0.03%, or I should say, three, was it three tenths or three one hundreds?
The figures I had were, and this is just the Portland-Salem CPI U, CPI Urban, it's supposed to be 1.4% for calendar year 2016 and 2.4% for calendar year 17.
That's not what was told us at the Budget Committee.
Well, that's the only figure I've got to speak to.
Why has it changed? And the point of the matter is, is what is a COLA? It's supposed to be cost-of-living adjustment. And you know, now it's built into our contracts, this COLA, that should be based on something, it's just because we want it? I mean, what index are we mandated to use, Ms. Krupp?
Well, so what we're using in our employment contracts is a minimum-maximum cost-of-living adjustment framework. And that is a particular strategy and approach that's used by some jurisdictions and not by all. Some jurisdictions in their labor contracts will adopt a cost-of-living adjustment that doesn't have a minimum floor and doesn't have a maximum. And the differences between the two involve a different set of risks. If you don't have a minimum-maximum framework, then when you encounter high inflationary times, you end up then encumbering higher salary it costs as a result of cost-of-living adjustments to match those higher inflations. And in a number of jurisdictions, the minimum-max, you set a floor, you set a ceiling, is intended to attenuate what are the fluctuations and changes in the economy. And what that means, then, is that in low inflation years, you won't go below the floor. And in this case, our labor contracts say 2%. And so you, there's a risk either way. You go with them. On balance over the long haul, it tends to average itself out, particularly if what you're doing is evaluating your salary classifications against what the marketplace calls for. In this particular case, we include non-represented in that in order to avoid both compression.
Listen, let me get back to what I was saying. I appreciate what you're saying, and I appreciate non-represented keeping up. But I'm really just a little bit upset with the nomenclature. It is not a cost-of-living increase or adjustment, when the cost of living didn't go up that much. What it is, is a raise. Now, there's step increases, there's merit raises, and now, because there really isn't that much inflation or cost-of-living increase, then it ends up being a raise as well. We talked about it last year, and I'll talk about it again. You know, the taxes that we collect, which are well over 90% of our income, we only get 3% increase every year. Yet our cost last year went up 4.3%. Now, where is that going to end? Where it ends is, we'll be laying people off, because we're not, we don't have the income to match our expenditures. It's happened before at this county. And so I'm concerned, because it's contractually written in. I mean, what if next year it's 0.001, we have to pay 2%? And I challenge you, because, look, you've got the budget information. Tell me, for the past 10 years, that that's turned out being a good deal for Clackamas County taxpayers? I don't think it has.
I think it's fair to say, given the low inflationary times, that a floor is more costly than going to the exact rate. I have worked in times when inflation rate was higher than what might be a typical max. And in those cases, what you might experience is, is cost-of-living adjustments that would be between 4.5%, 5%. In this particular case, and I appreciate your concern about the terminology, and we're just taking the terminology, using what we use in the labor contracts in the same way we're talking about the non-represented employees in the way this is structured here today. But the net cost to the total county budget for the cost of living adjustment and/or raise, however you want to frame it, is less than 0.1% of the total county budget. So look at less than one tenth, one tenth of 1%. Less than one tenth of 1%. So it's net effect on the budget is, has a de minimis effect on the total cost of operations for the county budget.
You haven't said what step raises and merit raises accumulate to.
But they're already programmed in the budget as well, so.
My point is, is that everything continues to go up. And there's got to be a point where you reach where you may not be able to fund all that which people want.
So I would be happy at some point in time, when we look towards future labor contract negotiations, to begin there and take direction from the board to talk about what other framework we might apply.
Well, the biggest thing is, again, is the language. If it ain't a COLA, don't call it a COLA, it's a raise. Now, you know, other things, I'll let that go. But, you know, other things include what Commissioner Bernard talked about. You know, there's a great desire for us to open those beds at the jail. We know this is going to cost money and some commitment on our part. I want to restore the fringe benefits to the sheriff's office, because, you know, everybody seemed to want to jump on his wagon this year. But he's got particular needs there, and he's got morale that needs to be kept up as well. The, I'm concerned that there isn't enough funding for juvenile. This year, we bypassed some dots that were available for juvenile. And, you know, we will definitely need more money into that in the near future. And certainly, I appreciate the job their new director is doing there. But overall, I'm very pleased with this budget. Also, I want to thank the Budget Committee, the laypeople, the five citizens that serve and take their week of vacation to be with us and give us advice. So thanks to them and their hard work. See, Commissioner Savas wants to talk, I'll say something later.
Oh, you, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, Paul.
I just want to just add, on the discussion you were all having about the 0.1%. And just want to, I just opened up the book here on, under the, we were talking in the context of the Compensation Board recommendation. So the sentence here that might recall says, "The total fiscal impact of the Compensation Board's recommended increases is $28,501, which constitutes approximately 0.01% of the county's total fiscal year 15-16 personal services budget of $234,687,19." Now, we were, again, it was raised under the context of the Compensation Board, so that might be what you recall.
I think you're talking about elected officials.
Yeah, but I think that's how you opened it, under the elected officials.
I did not.
Okay. But I think it's important to say, in the context of it, and Don, when you repeated it, I thought that was a context, the same context.
Well, the number I gave, those particular figures relate specifically to the Compensation Board's work on elected officials. Yeah, and the numbers I was giving has to do with the entire county workforce and the entire county budget.
Right, right. So I think, and then Diane's response was, was under the same context, I believe, correct? And when we had that quick dialogue back and forth about, you know, and you mentioned that the elected boards of the compensation, I guess, related, you didn't say undersheriff, but it was related to the undersheriff, that the requirement was to match that?
No, the, I think my comments were that the, included in the budget is acceptance of pieces of the recommendations of the Compensation Board for elected officials, specifically adding 0.8% to the clerk's salary and 2% to the assessor's salary. The other adjustments were not made.
Right, right. And I thought we were in the context of, and maybe that's where I got confused. I was just asking for clarification, that we were talking in the context of the elected officials' compensation piece.
Right, so this board did not approve a cost-of-living adjustment for the elected officials. You made the specific adjustments for those two elected officials. The Budget Committee recommended approval of those two changes, yes.
Right, and I think that was great. This is the first time, I think, since 2011 that we did not implement a raise for the county commissioners and some of the other elected officials, but a couple in this case. So that was huge, just wanted to just point that out. But I just, trying to clarify, I think, I thought that the discussion was going back and forth in their two different contexts. So Commissioner, or Chair Ludlow's point was more along the lines of perhaps what is the contractual labor contracts piece? And that, and those, and that increase, that's in that language, right?
The labor contracts have a minimum and a maximum range, so.
Right. So I wasn't sure, maybe, again, just wanted to just clarify what we were referring to. Not retorting anyone.
So anyway, the board has done, I think, a great job. And again, the Budget Committee has done a great job, and the staff, again, Diane, great job. And Don, you were there with, were there famous dot method there at the end, yet again. There was a lot less impact to those dots this time. But I think the cream rose to the top, and we took on the programs that we really had to do. But there's still a lot of other unfulfilled dots. I think, you know, we probably, I think the total ask was around $4 million for policy-level proposals, was that correct?
There were as many as $5 million worth of requests, so.
And we had around $800,000 to divvy out, is that correct?
We, about 1.2 million is what the Budget Committee recommended total.
Yeah, so, you know, I mean, there has been some talk about our different departments and their contingency funds, and we'll continue to talk about that, have briefings about that. And certainly some justification as to why those exist and the amounts that they're in. But I think our departments are responsible, and certain departments, I think, should have pretty good contingency funds. You know, you talk about our health clinics, for example. Our health clinics are mandated, we have mandated, they have at least three months operating capital, because something, you know, it went awry here a couple of years ago, and we had to loan some money, and good for them. With a program that Rich Swift wrote, they recovered very well, came back, and we're so glad we didn't have to close those. But that's just an example of what departments have to have, some kind of contingency fund, to keep up the services should there be an interruption. So I've said my piece, pretty much. I'm looking for a motion, and there's Commissioner Bernard.
I just wanted to add that one of the, when I got here a few years ago, there were non-represented employees that had not had a raise increase for seven years. And we didn't just, like, suddenly give them all these raise increases. They've got 2% like everybody else. So in some cases, those people haven't even caught up to where they could have been had we done that. And, you know, our non-rep folks do a lot of great work, and they also deserve that. And I don't disagree with you. At some point, we're going to hit a point where we don't have the money to do that. And that's going to be a tough one. And, you know, usually we say, well, if we can't afford this, we're just going to have to let people go. And that's what happened in Milwaukee when I was mayor, and that's what's happened here prior to us being here. So I would be happy to make a motion.
Let me just mention one more thing. Exactly, when I came here in 2013, there had been that long stretch of non-represented employees not getting that raise. And I was happy to say that that first year I came, and since then, they have got that raise. And why shouldn't they be able to stay even? It'd be very disconcerting if a supervisor was working for less than one of the people who works for them. And this is the case kind of with the sheriff and the undersheriff, you know, the buck, the dollar that has to be paid more to the sheriff than his highest-paid employee. Jim, go ahead.
I move, we approve the action and adopt the 2016-2017 budget for Clackamas County as presented in the resolution.
Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Further discussion? All right, Mary.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes 5-0. We're down to our second, we only got 15 to go, right? Yeah, rolling along.
So this very next item is a resolution to adopt changes in fees for the coming fiscal year, and Laurel Butman will present this.
Good morning, Commissioners, Laurel Butman, Deputy County Administrator. And there should be no surprises here, so I'll be brief. We have three policy sessions to look at fee increases for the year. We don't have any fine increases this year. And we have before you all those compiled together. And so we're looking for, we would like to recommend that you approve them and sign the resolution to adopt the changed fees for Clackamas County for fiscal year 2016-17. For the benefit of the public, I'll run through the departments that have changes. But if you have questions, I'm happy to entertain them. So we have changes in the county clerk's office, in transportation and development, in engineering, land use applications, and dog services, in facilities within the finance department, in environmental health. in environmental health, in health housing and human services, in the law library, and also in resolution services. Did you have any questions about those changes that we've talked about?
All right, Commissioners, any questions to the presenter? All right, uh, open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this matter. Close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move, we approve the, and adopt the changed fees for Clackamas County fiscal year 2016-2017 as presented in the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Commissioner Bernard with the motion, Commissioner Schrader with the second. Further discussion? All right, Mary.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes five zero. I'll announce that the board will recess as the board accounting commissioners and convene as the enhanced law enforcement district for the next item. Mr. Crump.
Okay, again, Diane Padilla will present this item. This is consideration of adopting the budget for the enhanced law enforcement district.
Yes, Commissioners, I'm requesting adoption for fiscal year 1617 of the budget for the Clackamas County Enhanced Law Enforcement District. Um, this district was created by the voters in 1995 and provides, uh, a higher level of patrol services in the unincorporated areas of the county within the urban growth boundary in Johnson City. Uh, the district will again be able to support 34 sworn positions, the same number as is currently being supported. Um, as was the case for the general county budget, this is the final step in a multi-step public process. The, the budget was approved by its budget committee on June 6th. And this budget was published in the Clackamas Review, Oregon City News, on June 22nd. Um, there's, again, four actions to be taken. Adopt the budget, make appropriations in the amount of $6,654,421. Categorize all tax revenue as falling under the general county limitation for Measure Five purposes. And impose the district's macan-, maximum permanent tax rate of .7198 dollars per thousand dollars of assessed value within district boundaries. And with that, I would respectfully request adoption of the 2016-17 budget for the Clackamas County Enhanced Law Enforcement District.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you. You know, I'm a, a fan of our sheriff's department because they do work that at, at times is just totally unable to do. I mean, it, it's really hard. And we talk about this special district that the voters approved of in 1995. And it has actually shrunk because, even though it was approved for 89 cents, due to compression, it went down to 72 cents. And today, you move forward to the year 2016, uh, costs for this, uh, department have gone up 33%. And, and that's very troublesome. Uh, and more and more money is being taken out of our general fund to backfill for these important services that we all want. And I just wanna say that this is another budget that probably isn't sustainable and we need to look at in the future on how we rectify this. I don't know what the answer is because the sheriff is gonna go out for another, to, um, re-approve, uh, this, um, is it a levy? Is that what this is called?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a levy.
It's not actually, this will know that's up for election.
Okay, well, whatever. Because that one has to do with this one. And, you know, the money, as he said, is kinda interspersed through his office. So when we look at, um, the sheriff and, and their levy, they don't wanna increase it because they're not willing to have it go down to gain a couple cents and lose 59 positions in the other budget. So I don't know how we're gonna, um, I don't know how we're going to make up this. Um, it's not a problem that we can fix this year, but it is a duty, as people expect, of our law enforcement folks to be flexible for new crimes, new, um, pressures that are putting, being put on our, um, law enforcement. Uh, this board is looking at a 3% marijuana tax, so hopefully we can help with that particular law enforcement agency and some of our code compliance on that to make sure, you know, we're abiding by the law and that. But there's just a lot of pressures, uh, being put on our sheriff's department, not alone, trying to fill 10, is it 10 beds at the jail?
Twenty-six.
What, yeah, 10 additional?
No, 26 additional beds.
Twenty-six additional for a million dollars, which, yes, we need those too. It helps our mental health, um, population with the counseling that goes on there. So, yes, I'm in, I approve this budget, but I just wanna let the folks know that this is one that is getting a lot of pressure for its sustainability.
Commissioner Savis?
Well, I just wanna build on that, so I don't, I don't disagree. And realizing that we've, as we increase the staffing, that comes with a cost, and I think we all care about that. And it's, um, you know, becoming increasingly clear in my six years that, um, the needs for public safety is huge and the support is huge. But it's also probably in total, not just this district, but in total, all the law enforcement stuff and public safety, including the DA's, um, but not his budget per se growing. But it's probably the largest, fastest-growing budget, um, total in totality with all these things that feed into it. And I think personally that at some point, the taxpayers or the levy are gonna have to step up because it's growing faster than we have the means to support it. And it's just, it's simply not sustainable. Um, and I think that's why it's important to look really hard at the, at the public safety levy, um, in regards to those beds because we just, we are compressing our ability to meet that. So just wanna make that comment.
You know, our sheriff's department, it, it's beyond this particular budget, but it's involved a lot of fantastic things. You know, you could think about patrol, that's one thing. But you think about the other things that are involved, like, like human trafficking, which is, which is greatly expanding up and down I-5. You think about child pornography, which is also getting huge in Clackamas County and, and the nation, by the way. And you think about, um, you know, the neighborhood livability project they've got going where they, they're intervening in these drug houses, these slum houses, and, uh, trying to make a difference so that the neighborhoods are not affected adversely. Not just the living there, but also their property values as well. So, uh, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this item. Or close the public hearing and ask for the motion.
I move, we approve the actions and adopt the 2016-17 budget for the Clackamas County Enhanced Law Enforcement District as presented in the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Savis, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Further discussion? All right, Mary.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes five zero. I'll announce the board will adjourn as the enhanced law enforcement district and convene as a Clackamas County Extension and 4-H Service District for the next item.
Yes, so again, I'll ask Diane Padilla to present this item. It involves adopting the budget for the, uh, Clackamas County Extension and 4-H Service District.
Okay, one more time for me. Um, the request to adopt the fiscal year 2016-17 budget for the Clackamas County Extension and 4-H Service District. Uh, this district was approved by voters in November of 2008 to allow programs serving families, youth, um, and agricultural and natural resource operations in the county to continue and to expand. Uh, these services include 4-H programs, technical assistance for farmers, um, family forest growers, nursery, and Christmas tree growers, gardeners, and homemakers. Since the district's inception, um, it has also been accumulating resources toward the goal of building a new extension education center, uh, which is to be built here on the Red Soils campus. Um, the 2016 budget, um, presented for adoption totals $6,833,370 and is as approved by the district's budget committee on June 6th and published in the Clackamas Review, Oregon City News, on June 22nd. We need to adopt the budget, make appropriations in the amount of $6,833,370. Categorize all tax revenue as falling under the general county, general government limitation for measure, measure five purposes. And impose the district's maximum permanent tax rate of 5 cents per thousand dollars of assessed value within district boundaries. And I would respectfully request adoption of this 1617 budget for Clackamas County Extension and 4-H Service District.
All right, Commissioners, any questions for Diane? All right, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this matter. I'll close the public hearing. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. If you remember during the, um, the budget hearing, um, Mike Bondi presented, and I think they're doing a very good job with their budget. But, you know, they have a dedicated tax source. They have a special district that taxes every taxpayer in Clackamas County so they can do these wonderful things. And there are a lot of wonderful things. One of which is they're able to set aside $500,000 a year for their new building. I don't know of any, there's not any other program in Clackamas County that can do that. I don't know that there's any program in the tri-counties area that does that. And so, um, while they have, um, saved, uh, almost $4 million, and, um, will be doing so over a nine-year period to fund that building, I often, uh, and that building is going forward, the board approved, dah 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 dah. I think, uh, we're gonna be doing some things to help, um, enhance that, um, building of that bill, of the structure. But I just wanna say, you know, what could we do with that $500,000 that they've been rat-holing for a building? And I'm not saying that the programs have suffered because they haven't. I mean, we have, uh, 350 volunteer adults who teaches our, uh, 4-H students who are trained. We have 3,500 kids in schools who learn from it, 160 clubs, and over, uh, 1,400 kids who participate in 4-H. But it's all plant-based. And, um, the agriculture, as far as the animal husbandry, really isn't addressed unless they do that in private clubs. And that's where our fairgrounds come into play because one of the tenants of the 4-H is to be able to show your animals. And you display the care and the nurturing and the genetics that you have, uh, developed with these animals to then get your awards. And that's what the kids' rewards are for all their years of work is to be able to show their animals. And, you know, we had to tear down a livestock barn and now we have a tent. So I'm going to be pushing this board for future years, uh, after this extension building is built, to look at that extra $500,000 that Mr. Bondi and this board has, uh, very carefully allocated and maybe, uh, use, uh, that to extend their services to a very needy area. And he and I had a discussion about that this week.
I'll bet you did.
We did.
Well, as it lays onto the fair board, you know, the fair board is also interested in how this department, or I should say, this entity can help the, um, the fairgrounds. Because, you know, the fair board is mandated to provide such things as livestock corrals, portable ones. And they're not cheap, under 10 to $20,000. Um, some of them have to be pretty heavy-duty, especially for cows and, knowing pigs, pigs do the same thing. They push on these things. But I would hope that, uh, Mr. Bondi could find his way, I agree with Commissioner Smith, to, uh, to dedicate and funnel a little bit of that money back to the fairgrounds specifically because 4-H uses the fairgrounds more than any other facility. So, uh, I've had the public hearing and we're entertaining a motion.
I'll move, um.
I move, we approve the actions and adopt the 2016-2017 budget for the Clackamas County Extension and 4-H Service District as presented in the resolution.
Second.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Savis and others. Any further discussion? All right, Mary.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes five zero. I'll announce the board will adjourn as a Clackamas County Extension and 4-H Service District and convene as the Library Service District of Clackamas County for the next item. Thank you, Diane.
So I will invite Mr. Gary Barth up, and of course, this is a public hearing to consider adopting the Library Service District of Clackamas County 2016-2017 budget. Mr. Barth.
Good morning, Commissioners. Gary Barth, Director of Business and Community Services. Uh, before you, it's a resolution, a staff report for the adoption of the Library District of Clackamas County budget for fiscal year 2016-17. The Library District Budget Committee met on June 6th to hear the budget message, hear public comment, deliberate on the proposed budget. The Budget Committee approved the budget in the amount of $19,076,187 with a tax rate of .3974 dollars per thousand of assessed value. As per Oregon budget law, notice this meeting and financial summary of the approved budget was published in the Clackamas Review on June 22nd, 2016. With that, I respectfully submit, uh, recommended adoption of the Library District budget for fiscal year 2016-2017.
All right, Commissioners, any questions for the presenter? All right, I'm gonna open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this item. I'll close the public hearing. I think the public should understand that this money is collected by us and fully distributed to the libraries, correct?
Correct.
So we, we do maintain the network, uh, by, via county funds, but this particular money is handed out to all the libraries of the, the county, correct?
Correct, to provide library services throughout the county. We do not keep anything for administrative services. A hundred percent is distributed to library providers.
Thank you. Commissioner Savis?
Now, I had the opportunity to meet with, um, Director Barth and the county administrator yesterday and talk about the library situation. And, and I know this is only the library district piece and that there's the library network, and there's also the individual library operations. But I, I did wanna say that our conversation yesterday was really about the level of service provided at the only remaining Clackamas County library, which happens to be in Oak Lodge. And, um, shared with staff the concerns that I've heard about the level of service at this particular library, which is really the goal of the district, the goal of the district and embedded in the, in the formation of 3-310 was to improve services. And, um, I think I shared with them what some others have cited as, uh, more staffing and programs at the Gladstone Library, for example, than what's going on at currently Oak Lodge. So I, certainly, though this district appropriates those funds to that library, we're not using all of those funds that are directed towards this particular li-, library for that level of service, and know it's less. So I just wanted to point that out, that that is still an issue that I feel has not really been resolved and complicated, and know that we're dealing with other libraries in the area as well. But, um, I still, um, have concerns about this, um, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to point that out.
All right, Commissioners, we have had the public hearing. We're open for a motion.
I move, we approve the actions and adopt the 2016-2017 budget for the Library Service District of Clackamas County as presented in the resolution.
Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Schrader, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Further discussion? Commissioner Bernard?
I just wanna say that, you know, the money you set aside because those services weren't provided, uh, provides a great opportunity in the future and something we've been working on for many years. And the Gladstone situation, uh, we've been waiting for that to be resolved and we're coming to, uh, um, a period of time, uh, I think it's another three months, where hopefully that'll be resolved. A particular, uh, situation that has made this even more challenging is the goodwill development next to the library that has impacted parking considerably. Wouldn't make any sense right now, because of the size of that facility, to put a whole lot of investment in there and to increase staff to provide services that don't fit in that space. So, or would anyone be able to park there? I mean, it's hard to even drive by the library with that fencing the way it currently is. So I think it was a smart thing to do to put that money aside. But it is something that we have to work on, and I know you have, and I appreciate your efforts to get this resolved. And, and it's something that will be a priority of this board in the future is to resolve that as soon as we possibly can.
I can respond quickly, Chair.
Commissioner Savis?
And I appreciate Commissioner Bernard pointing it out, and I just, I hope that somehow that the years of sacrifice of this particular district, or this particular library in the Oak Lodge area that's making the sacrifice, that's seeing less service is somehow, um,
Compensated.
Well, I won't say compensated, but somehow, uh, realizes, um, a benefit from that sacrifice that's going on today. And I, I think that's the important thing. And I think that a number of the constituents there have expressed that, that why should this library particular, or these constituents in particular, be making such a sacrifice and seeing a lower level of service than a lot of the other libraries in the county when, when the district was formed and paid for, uh, for an increase of level of service or maintaining a certain minimum? That's, that's, I don't wanna argue that issue, but I think that is the, the issue why. It's so, it's such a hot issue in that area right now.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I may, I, I've lived in that area until up to six months ago for 30 years. And so I was, uh, also, I agree with Commissioner Savis totally. We've been all very mindful of the level of service and staff. I can assure you, staff of the library, um, is very motivated to provide the, the optimal level of service. And I think we're making good progress on a, a long-term solution. So I'm, I'm optimistic about the future.
Well, we had discussion about the library and the situation. Well, we've had discussion about the library and the situation before, and we have some contractual obligations in that regard. But again, having grown up in Oak Grove, the closest library was Letting Library, and I used to travel a great distance on my bicycle or bummer ride in order to get down to a pretty outstanding library even back then, I thought. Otherwise, the only other library we had were in our schools. So this is going to take, I know there's, those who feel with great immediacy that this needs to be solved tomorrow, it isn't going to be. And it's going to take some time and some goodwill gestures on our part to try to make amends there. But, you know, we have a contract with Gladstone right now, and we would hope that they do what we've asked reasonably to do. So far, they haven't, and as Commissioner Savis said, we're hoping to resolve those. Commissioner Bernard said the same. So, did I open the public hearing on this yet?
Yes, and a motion.
Did I close that? Do we got the motion too? Well, let's just go ahead and vote.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Really? Struggle with this one. Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye, passes five-zero. I'm going to announce the board will adjourn as the Library Service District of Clackamas County, and convene as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District for the next item.
So, Mr. Barth, I would like to have you come back up to the table again to talk about the...
What did you do? Yeah, we had a pile. Get up there.
Good morning, Commissioners. Gary Barth, Director of Business and Community Services, here on behalf of the North Clackamas Park and Recreation District. Before you, a board order and a staff report for the adoption of the North Clackamas Park Recreation District budget for fiscal year 2016-17. This NCPRD Budget Committee met on June 6th of 2016 to hear the budget message, receive public comment, and deliberate on the proposed budget. Budget Committee approved the budget in the amount of $45,990,037, with a tax rate of .5382 dollars per $1,000 of assessed value. As per Oregon budget law, a notice this meeting financial summary of the approved budget was published in the Clackamas Review on June 22nd of 2016. And with that, I would like to respectfully recommend adoption of the NCPRD budget for fiscal year 2016-17.
Commissioner, any clarifying questions of the presenter? Gary, you know, we had talked, when the board took a position and asked for an increase and a change of governance, actually, in North Clackamas Park and Recreation District, you had said at that time that you run a little short on funds for maintenance. How's that doing?
We're actually doing fairly well on that. We're very, we run a very lean operation. We haven't increased the staff of NCPRD in a number of years, so we're always looking at ways to do things better, faster, quicker, and with our standards and policies. So we're staying up on the O and M. We're very mindful of our fee and schedule and our cost recovery methodology, so we want to make sure we're pricing our services to recover the cost necessary to try to stretch those dollars. We're faced with the same issues that were discussed in an earlier hearing, about our, a lot of our expenses are going up faster than the revenues we're receiving from our tax base, you know? So just as a public agency, we have to stay very creative, you know, and stay consistent. But we're getting by living within our 54 cents a thousand. Probably our biggest challenge is in our high-growth areas, where we're collecting park system development charges that are required to build new assets to mitigate the impact of growth, and then making sure we have the new assessed value relating from that growth to take care of those assets. And we've got some pretty good metrics that we look at before we bring a new asset online to make sure that that growth pays for growth.
Okay. All right, any further questions of the presenter? I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this matter. Close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move we approve the actions and adopt the 2016-2017 budget for the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District as presented in the resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Schrader, Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. I don't have any questions, so I save my comments for this particular point in time. And similar to the library district, and I, and library in particular that I spoke to is Zone 2 of the North Clackamas Park District, I'm going to express a similar thing. I'm not, I happen to live in both the library area in which I'm served, I mentioned in the last issue, but I also live in the Parks District Zone in which, and I'm not asking, and this is not an ask, and nor in the history of this as a commissioner, have I asked for anything special, different, unique, or above and beyond any other area in particular. But I want to point out what I think is just another issue, as we know from the existing master plan, or longstanding master plan, that this is identified as a severely underserved area, and again, another sacrifice. And in the capital plan spelled out going forward, there are a number of projects in the other zones that, and I granted, a lot of the SDCs are collected in the Happy Valley Zone, but the zone I'm talking about is a Milwaukee area, the zone in which Milwaukee, north of Oak Grove is, that, and congratulations to them on getting some attention towards some parks over there. But again, this is an area where there's not a lot of activity going on, an area where we're actually collecting a little bit higher SDC and revenues than the other zone. But hopefully, we can make some traction, but I just want to point out what I see as an inequity.
Well, we all know, and we decided, that that amount generated in each of these zones by SDC would be used in those zones. We made that decision a couple of years ago. It is true that in that particular zone, which includes Oak Grove, Jennings Lodge, and those areas, that there hasn't been a lot of generation of SDCs, because there isn't that many new buildings going up in that area. I think there's some opportunities in the near future in that regard, and we look forward to bringing about some more recreational area for that particular zone.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, you may.
A couple of points. One is there's a number of deficiencies within, throughout the district, and Commissioner Savis mentioned one area that's referenced as severely underserved. Deficiencies that are in the system cannot be corrected through system development charges. System development charges can only maintain a deficient system. So for us to correct deficiencies in the system that are non-growth-related, we have to find other means, and we've never had a capital bond in this district. We've had a revenue bond at the formation of the district, so. And at 54 cents a thousand, I do, and we'll take this opportunity to say that we are the lowest-funded park and recreation district in the state of Oregon, so I give kudos to my staff. I think we cover 36 square miles, serve over 116,000 residents, 68 parks, 19 miles of trails, and they do an exceptional job with the resources we have. We do that with 34 full-time employees, so. We're living within our means, as directed by the board after that November 14 vote, and I think we're doing exceptional, but we could do more if we had more.
Commissioner Savis.
I don't want my point to be lost, I'll just clarify that the, that the one zone that contains Happy Valley primarily and someone incorporated in the zone that incorporates Milwaukee and a little bit of the unincorporated, that the Oak Lodge area generates more SDCs than the Milwaukee area zone typically and historically. And there have been general fund contributions aside from this that have been made into those two city-dominated zones.
County, county general fund.
Yes, county general fund, you know, 2 million and 3 million, and none in this. And so I'm not, again, asking for anything special, but I think that there has been an imbalance in that area. So both from a general fund contribution, both from how, what the capital projects are going forward and identified in this year's budget, specifically what I'm talking about, there's not much activity going on in this zone still.
Well, I'll just say, failures by past commissioners will not be repeated here in regards to using general fund for things they probably shouldn't. Commissioner Bernard.
But it also should be noted that these are regional parks, you know, the Happy Valley Park and North Clackamas Park attract people from throughout the county and outside the county. They aren't neighborhood or community-specific. Yes, North Clackamas Park, I'm not sure it's a city-owned park, it used to be.
County, county owned the land originally, transferred it to the city in 19, in the 70s to be managed as a park, and then NCPRD took over operation when the district was formed in 1990.
Yeah, so, I mean, so it's a regional asset. It has nothing to do with Milwaukee, or that zone, and the baseball field that was invested in up in Happy Valley is not a Happy Valley Park, it's a regional park.
It's a district park. We like to say district, because we do program it for in-district residents, to the benefit of NCPRD residents is what we try to focus on, but that they are district-wide facilities.
Yeah.
Are we ready for the question? Chair, Mary?
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye, passes five-zero. Announce the board will adjourn as the North Clackamas Park and Recreation District, and convene as a development agency for the next two items. Now, Mr. Kup, you're going to have to leave here real soon.
I certainly am, so I'll introduce Dan Johnson, here to talk about the development agency budget, and I'm going to invite Laurel Butman up to take my place here at the table. So in doing so, I will thank you all so very much. It's been another great budget year. I very much appreciated the work that the Budget Committee did, and the work you have all done in putting all this together. Look forward to another very productive year.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Dan Johnson, Clackamas County Development Agency Manager, one of the various hats that I wear within our lovely organization. I'm here, I'm pleased to present to you and share with you the fiscal year 2016-2017 budget for the Clackamas County Development Agency. The agency is the Urban Renewal Authority for Clackamas County. It's important to understand the fact that we're charged with implementing four urban renewal plans within the county, one of which is the Clackamas Town Center area, the industrial area, the Government Camp Village revitalization area, and the North Clackamas revitalization area. Majority of the projects that are funded, the funding has been provided by tax increment funding or financing. On that note, it's equally important to understand the fact that levies to collect those funds have been retired in three of the four districts that we have. So we terminated the levy for the Clackamas Industrial Area in 2006, the levy for the Government Camp area in 2009, and last but not least, for the Clackamas Town Center area in 2013. The only levy that we have operating currently is in the North Clackamas revitalization area, one of the youngest of the planned areas that we have within the county. I'm also pleased to inform you that the agency's work within the Government Camp Village revitalization area is almost complete. Basically, there's no funding allocated in the budget put forward to you for fiscal year 16-17 for Government Camp. We have every intent to complete the remaining work within this budget year, which is a discussion we'll be having on the next topic, which is a supplemental budget related to 15-16, which allows us to transfer funds to other entities to complete that work, so we do not have to budget funds within our budget to do so. Moving forward, the budget does contain, or encompasses appropriations for the remaining three planned areas. Just a general summary of our budget, programmatic expenditures, we have about 6% of our budget. Those are programs that we work with, the community, primarily North Clackamas revitalization area, working with the community, provide various services and capital improvements to sites, mostly housing, to keep the affordable housing stock in that area moving forward and in good condition. Special district assistance, those are special payments to various partners we have within the area, primarily special districts. About 15% of our budget is associated or appropriated for that use. And last but not least, actual construction is about 69%. If you look at that in its totality, about 90% of the appropriations we have in our budget are set aside for capital construction purposes, either through our agency or through other entities. The Budget Agency Committee met and reviewed the document on June 6th and recommended your approval. Notice of these proceedings has been published in the local newspaper as required by local budget law. With respect, with that, I respectfully request the approval of the resolution adopting and appropriating funds for the fiscal year 2016-2017 Clackamas County Development Agency budget. That concludes our presentation.
All right, Commissioners, any clarifying questions to the presenter? All right, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this item. Close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move we approve the actions and adopt the 2016-2017 budget for the Clackamas County Development Agency as presented in the exceedingly long resolution.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Further discussion? All right, Mary?
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye, passes five-zero. The next one, Laurel.
Yes, Dan's still here with us, and he's going to talk about a supplemental budget.
I'm not sure if it was the length of the resolution or the length of the presentation, so we're going to make the presentation really quick, before you today...
That's rare.
Before you today is a request for supplemental budget for fiscal year 15-16. And the effort there is to complete our work in Government Camp through partnering with other entities to complete the remaining projects. There are two projects that are remaining, one of which is a safety project, which we will be looking to enter into an agreement with the Special Road District up there to complete, and it's associated with snowsheds and snow falling onto pedestrian areas and corridors. They've agreed to assume that responsibility. And the second of which is the Hoodland Fire Partnership, which the board is aware of. We were partnering with the fire district through an agreement to improve facilities up there. On the consent agenda today, our corresponding revisions to those agreements to make sure those monies get transferred by the end of the fiscal year, when those books close in August. So with that, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Commissioners, any questions to the presenter? All right, we're going to open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this item. Close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move we approve the resolution for Clackamas County supplemental budget greater than 10%, and the budget reduction for Clackamas County Development Agency for fiscal year 2015-16.
All right, is your second?
Second.
Commissioner Bernard with the motion, Commissioner Smith with the second further discussion. All right, Mary?
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye, passes five-zero. Announce the board will adjourn as the development agency, and convene as the Service District Number Five, street lighting, for the next item.
And I'm inviting Wendy Coriel up to speak to the street lighting district.
Hey, Dan, they want your chair.
I know, I'm just clarifying one simple thing. Clarify that for them. I'd like to clarify, if I could please, in the last action just taken by the board, there were two supplementals in that packet, one of which was for Government Camp, and one was for North Clackamas revitalization area as well. That is in the packet of information that was submitted to the public, and in the packet of information that was submitted to the Board of County Commissioners. I didn't speak to that, and I apologize to that, that adjustments within the North Clackamas revitalization area are focused towards partnerships we have with the school district to assist in the Wichita facility, and we're moving those from our capital line into a programmatic line, so we can transfer those funds so they can do that work. My apologies for the error.
Thank you.
All right, so we don't need any further action, though?
Correct.
All right. Now we're on to street lighting. Wendy Coriel finally gets her chair.
Okay, good morning, Commissioners. I'm Wendy Coriel, representing Clackamas County Service District Number Five. I'm before you today to ask the board to adopt the fiscal year 2016-17 budget for Clackamas County Service District Number Five. Board order before you today is for adopting the budget for Service District Five and appropriating funds in the amount of $4,199,855. The budget before you today for adoption is the budget reviewed and approved by the Budget Committee during the Budget Committee meeting on June 6th, 2016, and the notice for today's hearing was duly advertised in the June 22nd, 2016 Clackamas review. Mission of the district is to provide street lighting in the unincorporated areas of Clackamas County, and also for the cities of Happy Valley and Damascus. District contracts with PGE for the design, installation, maintenance, and operation of streetlights, and the cost of those streetlights are passed on to those served by the district via assessments that go out in the November property tax statements. Few highlights for this 16-17 year's budget. The district is maintaining a construction line, which is 481200, for capital projects in the amount of $1,075,089. The district phased increases in fiscal year 14-15 and 15-16, and anticipated future increases due to a 15% PGE rate increase, which took effect in January of 2014. PGE has indicated that they'll be going before the Oregon Public Utility Commission again this year. They expect to go before them in the fall, and are anticipating a rate increase. It's unknown at this time on what that increase will look like. District's analysis shows that with an average of a 1% or 2% rate increase, that should be offset by the enhanced revenue that we receive from the light emitting diode, or LED light installations that we've had. The district is going to expect to have adequate funds and reserves due to this LED cost savings, and so therefore, the district does not expect a rate increase and expects that the current rate structure will meet the needs for the district. And so we are not proposing a change in any of the 11 rate categories for fiscal year 16 and 17. Each year, the district reviews each rate structure, and the five-year forecast for the district shows that no rate change will provide the district with an adequate end of... the district show that no rate change will provide the district with an adequate ending fund balance. With that, that ends my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, and I am asking that the Board approve the Board order adopting the budget and appropriating funds in the amount of $4,199,855 for Clackamas County Service District Number Five.
Now, Wendy, several years ago, we ran into a problem where PGE forgot to tell us the rates were going up, and we had to absorb about a quarter of a million dollars for that error. Are we pretty sure those rates are not gonna go up and affect the rates that we have to charge?
I'm hopeful. We're working more closely with PGE to evaluate the increases. At this time, the scale in which it's going to go up is an average 1% for all of the rates that are served by PGE. And so, what happened last time is because we were on the top end of that scale, we were hit with a 15% increase, where some other areas that are served by PGE were lower. So, PGE doesn't know at this time where we're gonna fit on that scale, but I have asked that they do analysis on that and get back to me as soon as they can. And they did expect that it'll be close to the time that they go before the Oregon Public Utility Commission in the fall.
Okay. Commissioners, any further questions to the presenter? All right, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this matter. Close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move, we approve the action and adopt the 2016-2017 budget for Clackamas County Service District Number Five as presented in the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Further discussion? All right, Mary.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes five zero. I'll announce the board will adjourn as the Service District Number Five and convene as the Service District Number One for the next three items.
Exactly, and I'm informed that Doug Wall is running a little bit late, wondering if we might wanna take a short recess until he gets here. He's on his way.
I think that's totally appropriate. We're going, well, how long is Little away? Two minutes? We're gonna recess till noon, seven minutes. All right, ladies and gentlemen. Uh-oh. Pushed my button here. Ladies and gentlemen, reconvene. Let's see, we are currently, yes, we're still the Service District Number Five, and we're gonna see a presentation, right Laurel?
It's Service District Number One that we're on now.
Oh, I'm sorry, One, yes.
Yes, yes. Doug Wall's here to present three, a resolution and two orders for this district.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Doug Wall, the Finance Manager for Water and Environment Services. We are the County Department, which provides services to Clackamas County Service District Number One. Today, I'm bringing you the attached resolution and exhibit which adopts and appropriates funds for the Enterprise Fund budget for fiscal year 2016-17 for Clackamas County Service District Number One, and further adopts and appropriates the Debt Service Fund budget for Clackamas County Service District Number One. The Budget Committee for Clackamas County Service District Number One met on June 6, 2016, to consider its budget. The budget for the district was approved as recommended by staff. Spending levels considered necessary by the Budget Committee for Clackamas County Service District Number One to meet its operations, maintenance, capital, and debt service requirements, and to provide reserves amount to $68,735,585 for the district. This resolution to adopt and appropriate fiscal year 2016-17 budget and funds has been reviewed and approved by County Council.
You're supposed to ask for us to approve it.
Would you prove our budget?
That's excellent, please. There you go. Boy, you sold me on that one. God, how convincing, right? Okay, any questions to the presenter? All right, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this matter. Close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move, we approve the actions and adopt the 2016-17 budget for Clackamas County Service District One as presented in the resolutions.
Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Smith, she was able to have her way, and seconded by Commissioner Schrader.
I just like to move things along.
I know you're trying. All right, any further discussion on the motion? Mary.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes five zero. Laurel?
Yes, Doug will continue with Service District Number One.
Right, this next one is the attached order changes the retail equivalent dwelling unit monthly charge for sanitary sewer service within the district. Service areas from $43.50 to $45 per EDU per month. Ratepayers in the city of Happy Valley will be charged an additional amount of $2.25 per EDU for sanitary sewer service, and additional 35 cents per ESU for surface water management services to offset the city's right-of-way usage fee. The district's wholesale EDU monthly charge for sanitary sewer service changes from $32.89 to $34.47. That is the rate we charge to the city of Milwaukee under their wholesale IGA with us, so. These changes are effective for services rendered on and after July 1. The order further requires the district to publish the revised tables of its rules and regulations to reflect the changes. The changes in charges for monthly sanitary sewer service for the district are pursuant to the FY 2016-17 budget approved by the district's Budget Committee on June 6, 2016, and adopted by the Board of County Commissioners on June 29, 2016. So, I ask that you approve the rates and charges changes for the district.
That was much better.
Thank you. I get better.
All right, Commissioners, any questions? All right, we'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak. Close the public hearing and ask for the motion.
I move, we amend and adopt the rate and charges for Clackamas County Service District Number One as presented in the Board Order.
Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Further discussion? All right, Mary.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes five zero. And now, the third item.
The third item is an adjustment to the sanitary system development charge for Service District Number One. An increase in demand for investment based on growth within the district has resulted in a revised capital improvement plan, which is set forth in the report wastewater system development charge update. It's a report produced by Donovan Enterprises and was attached here to as Exhibit A. On May 23, 2016, staff presented to the River Health Advisory Committee with the option to increase the district's sanitary sewer system development charge. Committee voted to recommend the SDC be increased from $6,950 to $7,140, which is a 2.7% increase. As a result, the wholesale portion of the sanitary, of the SDC will be concurrently increased by the same percentage, increasing it from $5,970 to $6,130, and that is the rate we charge for the city of Milwaukee, for their wholesale services there. I ask that you adopt the proposed increase for system development charge for sanitary sewer system development charge for Service District Number One.
All right, Commissioners, any clarifying questions to the presenter?
I do, I have one. Doug, has the Advisory Board met since the budget discussion with regard to the SDCs? Have they had any discussion about that?
No, we have not.
Okay. I know there was, this created a lot of dialogue, and I know that we were ideally gonna be talking about that, I thought, a little bit sooner than later, and knowing the importance of the future capital expenditure that we foresee with regards to solids handling, you know, I think there was a, it was a split vote, but it passed, and we'll say it was a couple, three, three of us did not vote for this, and I probably will not be supporting this today, because I think that's something that has to be resolved sooner than later. But I just wanna know, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
All right, any further questions to the presenter? Open the public hearing and see if anyone wants to speak on this matter. Close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move, we approve the actions and adopt the 2016-2017 budget for Clack-
Number twelve.
Oh, excuse me. I move, we adopt and increase the system development charges for Clackamas County Service District Number One as presented in the Board Order.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Commissioner Bernard with the motion, Commissioner Schrader with the second. Commissioner Bernard.
So, the issue, Paul, that you mentioned is that who pays for the growth and the cost, right, of the needed capital investment for the district, right?
I think I would summarize it that way, but I think it was, it's really about, are we properly prepared financially to meet that need in an equitable way? And that's what the SDC does, it kind of relates to that growth piece. And the other district, which we'll be touching on soon, Tri-Cities, has a more aggressive ramp-up to meet that need. And it has been dialogue, and they have improved that, and the fact that they talked about it and they voted to continue on with their incremental program, you know, recently, as recent as about a year ago, and they followed through with that, I have a comfort level, but we have not really dialogued adequately. It's a, it's a issue that's been left unaddressed, and I think it's important because really, it's millions of dollars that, at the rate of growth, it's millions of dollars are being left on the table. And I think primarily, that was the concern of number of the Budget Committee members that spoke to it, as well as myself.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor. Are we ready for the ask? Yes, Mary.
Commissioners?
Nope.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes four to one. I'll announce the board will adjourn as Service District Number One and convene as the Tri-City Sewer District for the next three items.
And so, Doug Wall will present on the Tri-City Service District Number One, the budget, the rates, and the system development charges, and I will note that you have before you a letter from the city of Gladstone related to the rates. Just wanted to get that on the record.
Thank you, Laurel. Yes, I'm Doug Wall, the Finance Manager for Water and Environment Services, the County Department, which provides services to the Tri-City Service District. The attached resolution and exhibit adopts and appropriates funds for the Enterprise Fund budget for fiscal year 2016-17 for the Tri-City Service District, and further adopts and appropriates the Debt Service Fund budget for the Tri-City Service District. The Budget Committee for the Tri-City Service District met on June 6, 2016, to consider its budget. The budget was approved as recommended by staff. Spending levels considered necessary by the Budget Committee for the district to meet its operations and maintenance, capital, and debt service requirements, and to provide reserves amount to $15,311,312 for the Tri-City Service District. I ask that you adopt the budget for 2016-17 for the 2016, or for the Tri-City Service District.
All right, any questions, Commissioners? I'll make a statement here. You know, a couple of years ago, Oregon City decided that they needed to place a fee on our fee, so it's an essence, a tax on our fee. It was expected that the Tri-City Sewer District, all three cities, and some unincorporated, would absorb that fee. That wasn't gonna happen. This Board authorized a special increase for Oregon City, because they did that. Now, Gladstone says they're gonna do it, and we're gonna do the same thing. Now, we are in court in regards to the validity of that, of our ability to do that, but again, I think, I hope the court will rule that, again, a public entity taxing a public entity is not good business, and the loser in this is always the rate payer that has to pay this extra fee, and for what? They claim that they'll use it for their, for their capital projects, specifically sewer. We already know that we have a huge, in the Tri-City Sewer District, especially because of the old cities, we have a huge problem with INI, infiltration of groundwater. And, you know, it's interesting that for those listening out there, that, you know, they don't measure sewage capacity in the summer. They measure it in the winter, because that's when those pipes get full of rainwater, and we have to treat that rainwater, and that's what we're doing to the tune of millions of gallons a day. So, you know, maybe that these people could fix their pipes, we could provide more volume because of that, and they wouldn't have to charge a double fee on their own patrons. I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this matter. Close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move, we approve the actions.
I move, we approve the actions and adopt the 2016-2017 budget for the Clackamas County Tri-City Service District as presented in the resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Further discussion? All right, Mary.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes five zero. The next one.
Hello, the next Board Order is, contains changes to the equivalent dwelling unit monthly charge for wholesale sanitary sewer service within the Tri-City Service District from $20 to $21.50 per EDU per month. The city of Oregon City will be charged an additional amount of $1.40 per EDU to offset the city's right-of-way usage fee. The Tri-City Budget Committee recommended these increases and has reviewed the 2016-17 fiscal year budget associated with this increase. The monthly service charge for retail sanitary sewer service will be adjusted from $30 to $31 per EDU. These changes are effective for services rendered on and after July 1, 2016. The order further requires the district to amend Table One of its rules and regulations to reflect this change. The change in charges for monthly sanitary sewer service for Tri-City, for the Tri-City Service District is pursuant to the 2016-17 budget approved by the district's Budget Committee on June 16, on June 6, 2016, and adopted by the Board on June 29, 2016. I ask that you adopt the proposed rates and charges for the Tri-City Service District.
All right, any questions to the presenter?
Yes, I do. Doug, has, what, the Advisory Board for the Tri-City Service District, as relates to this particular issue on the rates, particularly the customary rates, not the right-of-way fee piece, how much dialogue deliberation was, occurred on this matter in preparation for the budget?
The Advisory Committee did not have comments on the budget when we proposed it at their meeting on May 25.
So, they were silent or unprepared, or which?
I was there, they, you know, they basically, you know, if you look at these raises, they're designed to help facilitate the actual construction we have to do. They did not think that the increases were unreasonable.
Okay. So, specifically, do, from the financial plan, are these rates in line to meet that, I mean, ideally? I mean, are we, so I just didn't know, because I haven't seen the recommendation, but, because there was none from them particularly, but in the rate schedule, is this rate commensurate with the steady ramping that we anticipate in the last model, or should it be updated?
Yes, Commissioner, it is in line with our current plan for preparing the district to help contribute its fair share of the solids handling facilities that we are looking at building for both districts right now. So, it is in line with that.
And I, and then, decision point, when do we anticipate a decision point on the, on the capital piece of that?
That's part of the regional committee that is deliberating that.
Tomorrow night, they're gonna be deliberating on that.
There's another meeting tomorrow night around that, so.
Will that be the decision point?
You know, it's rumored that that would be, I'm not sure. It's not, I'm just a liaison, not a committee member.
Yeah, 'cause we're so long, yeah, a little overdue for resolution on that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're still in line on a critical path to make, to meet our needs. Commissioner Bernard?
I just wanna say that, you know, the important thing is that, you know, we raise the money and pay, raise the fees so that that, those fees, you know, are somewhat balanced and address the need, future needs, without not, if we didn't do it, that burden would be on future residents, your grandchildren, your children, and it would be a much greater increase. So, I think the committees have worked really hard to try and make this as painless as possible. Any increase, of course, is a pain, but, you know, our investment in our infrastructure, we can, we no longer can look to the federal government, which funded a lot of these projects when they were created, rather than dumping waste into the river. They're not gonna be here for us to get, to upgrade these facilities, but it is something that we need to do, and I appreciate the hard work that, and I hope that this week that final decision will be made, even though we are doing, we are on that critical path. that final decision will be made, even though we are doing, we are on that critical path, those monies are going to be collected, and we're going to be ready when the time comes.
Yeah. All right, I'll open the public hearing and see if anyone wishes to speak on this matter. Close the public hearing and ask for the motion.
I move we amend and adopt the rates and charges for Clackamas County Tri-City Service District as presented in the board order.
Is there a second? I'll second it.
I'll go ahead, John.
Commissioner Bernard with the motion, Chair Ledlow with the second. Further discussion?
Just one thing. Doug, I borrowed, or let the attorney look at my letter here, so I have it back in my hand, I got able to review my question here.
Okay.
This fee, this right-of-way fee, was that discussed at the last Tri-City Service District meeting?
I don't believe it was. This is a developing story, if you will, for the district. We've only been recently told that Gladstone was looking at actually doing the fee. Their, the current information we have is that they're looking at implementing, implementing it as of October first, so I'm starting to have meetings with staff with Gladstone to implement a process for managing this fee that's very similar to the one we use for Oregon City, and it's been quite successful with them, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, are you done with all the questions? Mary?
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Chair Ledlow.
Aye, passes five-zero. Next.
Okay, the final one for the Tri-City Service District is updating the system's development charge for the district. On May twenty-fifth, staff presented to the Tri-City Advisory Committee the option for increasing the district's sanitary sewer system development charge. Committee voted to recommend the SDC be increased from twenty-four hundred to two thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. I respectfully ask that you adopt the change in the Tri-City Service District SDC.
All right, any questions to the presenter? All right, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak. Close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move we adopt an increase in the system development charge for Tri-City Service District as presented in the board order.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Savas, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Further discussion, Commissioner Bernard.
Hey, it's amazing how much lower this one is than the other.
It's wholesale.
Okay. And the other one wasn't wholesale, so the...
It's wholesale and retail combined.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, the Tri-City Sewer District receives a wholesale rate for us. Some of the cities in there choose to add fifteen to eighteen dollars to that.
Yeah.
What they do with those funds, again, we hope that they cure some of their INI problems so we have more capacity. So any further discussions to the presenter? All right, open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this item. Close the public hearing. Ask, did we do that?
Yeah, we already did all that. I just need to call the roll.
Got to check my market, my markup sheet here. Mary?
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Chair Ledlow.
Aye, passes five-zero. Announce the board will adjourn as a Tri-City Sewer District and convene as a Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County for the next item.
And with that, we are at our last hearing, and Doug is going to present on the Surface Water Management Agency's budget.
Hello, I'm Doug Wall, the Finance Manager for Water Environment Services. We are the county department which provides services to the Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County. The attached resolution and exhibit adopts and appropriates funds for the Enterprise Fund Budget for fiscal year 2016-17 for the Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County, and further adopts and appropriates the Debt Service Fund Budget for the Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County. The Budget Committee for the Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County met on June sixth to consider its budget. The budget was approved as recommended by staff. Spending levels considered necessary by the Budget Committee for the Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County to meet its operations and maintenance, capital, and debt service requirements, and to provide reserves amount to two hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars for the district. I ask that you respectfully approve the budget for the, for the district, 2016-17.
All right, any questions to the presenter? Open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this last item. I'll close the public hearing and ask for the motion. I move, go ahead. All right.
Okay, I move we approve the actions and adopt the 2016-17 budget for the Clackamas County Surface Water Management Agency as presented in the resolution.
Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Schrader, seconded by Commissioner Savas. Any further discussion? Mary.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Ledlow.
Aye, passes five-zero. I'll announce the board will adjourn as the Surface Water Management Agency and reconvene as the County Board of Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting, and we're going to have, thank you, Doug, we're going to have a surrogate reader here. That's right.
Yeah, I'm going to start it, and Kevin's going to...
Oh, you're going to start it?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Where's Kevin? Oh.
The consent agenda.
Wow. Like two movie stars.
Mary, this is a long one.
Yeah, the consent agenda for June twenty-ninth, 2016. Okay. Oh, shoot. Okay. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of an agency services contract with Northwest Family Services for children of incarcerated parents services, approval of an agency service contract with Tudos Hudos for Prevent Net Early Childhood Services, approval of an agency services contract with Clackamas Women's Services for Shelter, Crisis, Advocacy Services, Rural Services, and Camp Hope, approval of an agency service contract with Metropolitan Family Services for Family Resource Coordinating Services, approval of a residential service court, residential agency services contract with Care, Columbia Care Services, Inc., approval of a revenue intergovernmental agreement with Washington County for a regional prevention coordinator for fiscal year fifteen, sixteen, and approval of a revenue intergovernmental agreement with Washington County for a regional prevention coordinator for fiscal year sixteen, seventeen, approval of a renewal of revenue intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County, County Community Corrections to provide behavioral health services to community correction consumers, approval of a revenue professional services agreement with Folk Time, Inc., for peer services to the Stewart Community Center and Hilltop Adult Services Center, approval of a revenue intergovernmental agreement with Washington County for city readiness initiative program, and under the Department of Transportation and Development, a board order approving the solid waste management fee adjustment, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Milwaukee and Clackamas County to assist the city's annual solid waste production review, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Washington County to assign road maintenance services, and approval of a contract with Eliting Northwest for the Milk Creek and at Malino Road Bank Stabilization Project, and Kevin Moss is going to take it from here.
All right, under elected officials, we have approval of business, previous business meeting minutes, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County Sheriff's Office and the City of Portland Bureau of Police for overtime costs for after-hours and weekend call-outs, approval of a contract with Tyler Technologies to provide a court management and financial application software system to the Justice Court. Under Community Corrections, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Westland to provide work crew services for fiscal year 2016, 2017, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Happy Valley to provide work crew services for fiscal year 2016, 2017, and approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Milwaukee to provide work crew services for fiscal year 2016, 2017. Under our Department of Public and Government Affairs, a board order in the matter of an extension of the cable television franchise with Canby Telephone Association, doing business as Canby Telecom. Under our Department of Emergency Management, approval of fiscal year 2015 Urban Area Security Initiative Subrecipient Grant Agreement with Clackamas Fire District Number One, approval of amendment number one to the subrecipient grant agreement number sixteen dash zero two three with the Department of Forestry, North Cascades District for Fire Prevention Coordination. Under our Juvenile Department, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Moulton County to provide assessment and evaluation beds for at-risk youth, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County Education Service District to provide education and vocational opportunities for at-risk youth, approval of a grant award for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Program for fiscal year 2016. Under our Development Agency, approval of a funding agreement with Government Camp Special Road District, approval of an amendment to the Owner Participation and Development Agreement with Hoodland Fire District Number Seventy-four, and finally, under Water Environmental Services, approval of amendment number one to the intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and Clackamas County Service District Number One and the city of Happy Valley for streets sweeping services, and that concludes the consent agenda.
All right. Any, any item you want pulled, commissioners, before we proceed? All right, entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Further discussion? All right, Mary, oh, Mary. You can do that one, can't you?
Yes, I can. Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Chair Ledlow.
Aye, passes five-zero. And Laurel, I guess you're stepping in to tell us any good news you want to, and Mr. Croupple's...
Well, I have lots of good news, but this is one of the longest meetings of the year, so I think I'm going to pass this time.
That's a, you know, that was a hint to us, I think. All right, it's time for commissioners' communication. We'll start with Commissioner Bernard.
Well, it's been a long day. Happy Fourth of July, and please be safe out there. See, I, I think I'll just do the dog announcement.
There you go.
Remind people to keep their pets in because of the...
Oh, yeah, yeah, and it's a, you know, the dog shelter gets a lot of dogs on the Fourth of July, so be very careful that your dog is secure or in the house because fireworks tend to scare them off, and I am actually coming home from the beach to put the dogs in the house rather than at the coast where there's lots of fireworks. So this is Merrill. There is nothing, there is nothing cut, oh, cuter, I was going to say cutter, than a darling, juvie, basset hound. He's a senior citizen dreaming of a place for his retirement years. A home with older children and adults would be best for him, where he'll get lots of tender attention and loving care. Merrill would enjoy a visit from you today. So if you want to visit Merrill, visit the Clackamas County Dog Shelter and, or call them at five oh three six five five eight six two eight, and visit them on the web at Thank you, have a safe Fourth of July.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith.
I'm not going to say a lot either, but just be, have a safe Fourth of July. You remember the last Fourth of July, we were asking people not to use fireworks because it was so dry, and we were in a drought situation. You know, what a difference a year makes. Have a great holiday weekend, everybody.
Commissioner Schrader.
Okay, I'm just going to do the arts and culture announcements, activities in the county for the Fourth of July weekend. Okay, Clackamas Repertory Theater presents One Slight Hitch, a comedy about a wedding party gone spectacularly wrong, written by the hilarious Louis Black. One Slight Hitch trades black's traditional morose humor for witty banter and snappy one-liners. Thursday, June thirtieth, Saturday, July second, seven-thirty, and Sunday, July third, two-thirty P.M. at the Osterman Theater on the Clackamas Community College campus. And in my own neck of the woods, the Millennium Concert Band performs a patriotic concert. Lake Oswego's own Millennium Concert Band, under the direction of Dale Cleland, the audience is entertained with arrangements that include both military and marching compositions. The evening performance features the presentation of colors by the Lake Oswego Honor Guard as well as a dramatic tribute to veterans. I'll be there, Sunday, July third, seven P.M. at Millennium Park, Plaza Park in Lake Oswego, and for more information, you can go to the Arts Alliance website at clackamasartsalliance.org. Have a happy and safe Fourth of July. Even, even fireworks will not cause my dogs to run away because they are too spoiled, and they like where they live. They have a very, very safe and spoiled living environment. So happy Fourth, everyone.
Commissioner Savas.
I'll be brief. I just want to just mention that today's Wednesday, and normally we meet, have our business meetings on Thursday, and that's because tomorrow is kind of a special event for Clackamas County. We are going to be opening the Sunrise Corridor, and so we have the ribbon cutting about this time tomorrow, and I just, just tickle that this project is actually where it's at today, and I just want to just let people know that, and also as well, everyone have a safe and happy Fourth of July.
Yeah, I'll, I was going to mention that, but you did, and thank you for doing that. I think one of the biggest concerns I have for this weekend is what's called the big float. It's where Barton Park will gather in thousands of people, usually from some other counties, and it'll be a very big concern, and our sheriff's deputy's going to be on that, but, and our crew, as they're known, too. But for those who are floating down the Clackamas River, just remember this time of year, that water is still hugely cold. It's cold, and there are life jackets there that you can borrow, and please do, and bags dispose of all your problem garbage, but again, Clackamas County is a great place to work, visit, and live in, but it's the recreation part can be dangerous, especially on the cold Clackamas River. So ladies and gentlemen, it's been a long day, two and a half hour meeting, which is rare for us, but it's important work because it's the budget. There being no further business before the commission, this day, this meeting is adjourned.